Order the reorganization meeting of the School Board of Manatee County for Tuesday, November 19th, 2024. This is the annual reorganization meeting of the school board, held pursuant to Section 1001.371 Florida statutes. During this meeting, community members elected and appointed to the school board will be sworn in, and then board members will elect from among themselves a chair and a vice chair. At this time, please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
On the dais today are three new members of the school board, and so I'd like to begin by congratulating Heather Felton for election in District 1. Congratulations. Congratulations to Charlie Kennedy for election in District 3. And congratulations to Richard Tatum for appointment by the governor in District 5. I'd like to extend a welcome to all of the Kennedy, Felton, and Tatum family members who are present with us this morning. Thank you for being here. At this time, we will proceed with the swearing-in of each board member. We'll proceed in order by district number. And joining us today for the swearing-in is the Honorable Judge Renee Inman. Judge Inman, thank you for being here with us today. She was last year, I think, for my swearing-in about 16 months ago, so it's nice to have you back. We'll begin by inviting Mrs. Felton to the podium to be sworn in.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me, please. I do solemnly swear
I do solemnly swear
or affirm
or affirm
that I will support, protect, and defend
that I will support, protect, and defend
the Constitution and government
the Constitution and government
of the United States and of the state of Florida
of the United States and of the state of Florida
that I am duly qualified to hold office
that I am duly qualified to hold office
under the Constitution of the state
of the Constitution of the state
and that I will well and faithfully
and that I will well and faithfully
perform the duties of school board member
perform the duties of school board member
on which I am now about to enter
on which I am now about to enter
so help me God
so help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And now invite Mr. Kennedy to the podium for swearing-in.
I do solemnly swear or affirm I do solemnly swear
that I will support, protect, and defend
that I will support, protect, and defend
the Constitution and government
the Constitution and government
of the United States and of the state of Florida
of the United States and the state of Florida
that I am duly qualified to hold office
that I am duly qualified to hold office
under the Constitution of the state
under the Constitution of the state
and that I will well and faithfully perform
that I will well and faithfully perform
the duties of school board member
the duties of school board member
on which I am now about to enter
on which I am now about to enter
so help me God
so help me God.
You're welcome. Congratulations.
Now invite Mr. Tatum to the podium to take the oath of office.
She can't keep it.
All right, good. Come over here.
Okay, you ready?
Yes, ready.
Repeat after me.
Yes, ma'am.
I do solemnly swear or affirm
I do solemnly swear
that I will support, protect, and defend
that I will support, protect, and defend
the Constitution and government
the Constitution and government
of the United States and of the state of Florida
of the United States and of the state of Florida
that I am duly qualified to hold office
that I am duly qualified to hold office
under the Constitution of the state
under the Constitution of the state
and that I will well and faithfully perform
and that I will well and faithfully perform
the duties of school board member
the duties of school board member
on which I am now about to enter
on which I am now about to enter
so help me God
so help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you, ma'am.
Board members, with our complete board seated, the next order of business is election of the chair. Nominations are now in order for the office of chair, including self-nominations. Are there nominations?
Superintendent Wyson, I'd like to nominate Chairman Choate.
Chad Choate is nominated for chair.
A second.
A second is not necessary at this time. Are there other nominations?
I'd like to nominate myself as chair.
Cindy Spray is nominated for chair. Are there other nominations? Seeing no other nominations, we'll close the floor. We have more than one nominee for chair, and so we will vote one by one in the order nominated. The nominee who receives the majority of the majority vote will be chair. We'll begin with Chad Choate. Those in favor of Mr. Choate for chair, please say aye.
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 I saw four votes for Mr. Choate. Those opposed, say no. Ms. Spray, are you voting?
I will concede to the chair.
So is that, so you're voting yes, just for the record?
Yes.
So we have five votes for Mr. Choate. Mr. Choate is elected chair of the school board. Congratulations. We'll now proceed to election of a vice chair. Nominations are in order for the office of vice chair, including self-nominations.
I'd like to nominate Richard Tatum.
Richard Tatum is nominated for vice chair. Are there other nominations?
Superintendent Wyson, I'd like to nominate Ms. Spray for vice chair again.
Cindy Spray is nominated for vice chair. Are there other nominations? Seeing none, the floor is closed. We have more than one nominee for vice chair, and so we will now vote one by one in the order nominated, and the nominee who receives the majority vote will be vice chair. We'll begin with Richard Tatum. Those in favor of Mr. Tatum for vice chair, please say aye.
Aye.
I see two votes. Those opposed, say no.
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 And there are three no votes. We'll now proceed to Cindy Spray. Those in favor of Mrs. Spray, say aye.
Aye.
I see three votes. And those opposed, say no.
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 And there are two votes. So on a three to two vote, Mrs. Spray is elected vice chair of the board. Congratulations.
Thank you.
So we have our chair and vice chair of the board, and at this time, I will pass the gavel to Mr. Choate as chair of the board, and I'll ask for a brief recess so that we can reset for the remainder of the meeting. Thank you.
All right, welcome back from that small recess, back to the reorg meeting this morning. So we're going to move to item number five, which is setting the schedule for our regular board meetings. So I asked the board, was there any concerns or any dates here? I've looked it over. I didn't see any dates. There were any issues? No start of the school or anything like that? Anybody see anything that needs to be tweaked?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
The only thing that I would like to get a consensus of, the rest of the board members, on the July 29th, 5:05 PM budget, and the September 9th finance budget, both of those meetings, I would like to move to 5:30 to allow the public to be able to attend instead of the 5:05.
I would support that as well.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I would like to actually talk about possibly moving all of our evening meetings to 5:30 so that the public and our employees are able to attend.
Any thoughts?
Yeah, thanks, Chad. I'm curious, I remember why we went to an evening meeting and a daytime meeting, and that made a lot of sense, and it worked well. But I'm curious, if you could briefly, why did we go from 5:45 to 5:00?
I don't remember. That was changed, I thought, when we did the morning in the evening.
Well, it could have been, I just don't remember.
Possibly. It's never been 5:45 since I've been on the board. Even 21.
Really? Maybe I'm misremembering it, but that's okay. No, but I would support both of those. I think pushing it back to 5:30 would help, especially given our traffic situation in Manatee County at the moment. And I know public comment's now a little bit farther back in the meeting, but I would hate for somebody to sign up for public comment and then miss it because they were stuck. So I think just giving folks that half hour leeway is a good idea. Chairman Choate, if I may, I'm also curious why, I know why we only have one meeting in December and March, obviously holidays, winter break and spring break, but I'm curious why we now only have one meeting in January and one meeting in May? Is there, anybody have a history of that? And I'm just curious.
I think the first meeting in January is we're off of school.
So, Chairman, if, so I can answer if you'd like. When you run two meetings in January with the first meeting being in the second week of January, you're actually building that agenda out in December. It's a little bit challenging with the workflow that's kind of behind the scenes. So we just proposed as a team, kind of closing out December, coming back in January, building a book, and then doing the single meeting in January. There's no policy that requires two meetings. As you can see, some months there are two, others there are one. We, and I think, as most of you know, when you do have two board meetings that are exactly two weeks apart, we have the meeting on the Tuesday night, and then you get the first draft agenda the very next day on Wednesday, which means that staff's working on two meeting agendas really at the same time. And so we're just trying to make it a little bit cleaner, frankly, so that more of my senior leadership team is in schools more and in agenda prep a little bit less. But this is the board's calendar, so if you would prefer two meetings in January, we can certainly throw those dates out.
Okay. Chad, if I may?
Yeah, go ahead.
No, just to finish this, close this thought. No, Superintendent Wyson, that was my concern, was for your team, for you and your team. If you are recommending to us that this is a good system, I'm totally fine with keeping it.
We did work on this calendar as a team and went through all the different scenarios. So we think this gets it, and it's not just the work on the staff, it's also the work on all of you and not immediately finishing one meeting and then being handed the new agenda the very next day, and then you're always in that agenda prep mode. And then, of course, the other piece is workshops are not on here, so that adds another workflow. But yeah, we're, as a staff, we're very comfortable with this calendar, but we're also happy with whatever modifications you want to make.
Okay, no, that's all I wanted to drill down on.
As there's some other questions on here, other than the 5:30 stuff, I understand we have one meeting by itself, December, January, let's put that at 5 o'clock, which now we're proposing 5:30. Why is the July meeting, 22nd, at 5:00 PM, or potentially 5:30 instead of the 10, since we had the July one at night? I know the September 9th one has to be at 5:00. Has to be late, because it's the financial budget deal, but what, was there, was it, is that typo, or is it just?
No, we
Do we want it there?
Well, Chairman, essentially what we did is the budget meeting, and that's the tentative budget approval, has to be on the 29th because of the way the statutes and notice work.
Correct.
And so our intention as a leadership team is that on the 29th, we'll only deal with the budget.
I got you. So the 22nd is our real meeting.
So the 22nd, right, so, and specifically on the 22nd, that should be final approval of the code of conduct, the student progression plan, and all of those things that really set up the start of the year.
We don't have one earlier in July.
Yes, sir.
I'm on the same page. I see that. Okay, thank you. So are we okay with 5:30 then, for sure, board start time?
I think there was some discussion about keeping staff longer in the evenings, but you know.
I do agree with that.
But, I mean, we're here for the public, you know, half an hour. I just want to make sure that that's taken into consideration, but I think the other consideration is there are some traffic issues, and giving people an extra half hour to get here for a public meeting is probably in the best interest of the public. I'm good with that.
I actually don't want to keep staff here till 9:30, 10 o'clock, and they got to be here 7:30. Yes.
And looking at that, to Mr. Kennedy's point, the July 5:00 PM, that puts us having three meetings right in a row of now 5:30 PM, it kind of looks like consenses are going to go there. So our June 24th is at 5:00, our July is at 5:00, July 22nd, and then our July 29th is at 5:00. So that's three 5:00 PM meetings in a row, am I?
Yeah.
So.
Well, we'll have almost a month in between
Probably.
in July, obviously, but
I'm guessing there'll be a workshop in between those times.
Yeah, I'm sure.
Okay. Okay, I just want to point that out.
Part of that is July 4th week being off and things like that.
Right. Okay.
So, just going to make, someone make the actual motion of the 5:30.
I'd like to make a motion to move the 5:00 PM meetings to 5:30.
One second. We're doing it to do that on?
We're not in granite, so we'll just do it manually.
Oh, I'm in granite, okay.
All those All those in favor of moving the 5:00 PM to 5:30 for all regular meetings, just raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
None opposed, passes 5 to 0? Anything else with the calendars? I don't think there was. This gets approved actually later, so... No, it doesn't. Any, I don't, no other changes or dates changes or anything like that? We're good?
Mm-hmm.
Do you want to get a regular vote now on the full calendar, or since we changed it, you were, you were okay with that? Do another full? Yeah, so we need a, we need a motion to accept the calendar now amended, 5:30.
Okay.
So moved.
One second. I thought we did that, but yeah.
No, we just changed it to 5:30.
Okay.
Now that it's amended, now we gotta vote on the actual final approval. Right, so, you got that, Mr. Tatum? Motioned. Ms. Spray, seconded. All right, all those in favor of approving the 24-25 meeting dates calendar, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
No opposed, 5 to 0. Dates are set. So before we jump into the committee, I will mention the workshops. So, I know typically for years, I guess, I mean, we really didn't change any of this, we've always done the workshops on the Friday after the meetings. Obviously, the workshops are more fluid than meetings, for sure. Sometimes we need them, sometimes we don't, sometimes there's hurricanes, sometimes there's not. So, my thought is, is I'm okay with the Friday workshop meetings. I mean, that's just kind of what I've, I've had, never had anything different. Actually, maybe we did one year, we did Thursdays, I think.
Yeah.
Whenever Golden was the chair. So I'm okay with keeping Fridays. Any discussion on workshops and when to, when to, to do those? Yeah?
I don't mind being Friday, but I would like to move them to be 10 AM to align with our school board, instead of at 9:00.
Okay. Concerning about that?
You okay with that?
Yep.
Dr. Wyson, how does that impact the staff?
We, we work for you, Mr. Tatum.
I figured that was gonna be the answer, but there was a reason.
Yeah, I would agree with you.
I always wondered why the meetings were at 9:00 and the workshops, I mean, the meetings were at 10:00 and the workshops were at 9:00.
Yeah.
I mean, ultimately, if we move, if we have it 10:00, and they're three or four hours, now staff's out of here at another hour later than if we started at 9:00, obviously. So, I think that's the only reason why we ever did it, was like, hey, we're trying to make it a half day of, in the meetings, and then they get another half day of working. But I don't particularly care either way, as long as, Dr. Wyson, you feel like your staff is okay with that and it is what it is.
We're fine.
Okay. We don't need to vote on that or anything like that, that could just be something we do. But are we okay with Fridays? We're okay with that first, during the week of the, of the regular board meetings, like always?
Are you okay with the Fridays? That, I think would be the big question for the two.
Fridays at 10:00.
Yeah, Fridays at 10:00.
Chad, just to be clear, that's every Friday following a Tuesday board meeting.
Correct.
That's, yeah, typically how we, yeah.
Yep. All right.
Tuesday, Friday, Tuesday, Friday.
So move to the board committee assignments for 24-25. We are not voting on this, this will be on the agenda for our December meeting. So this is just us discussing, obviously we have board members that are gonna be listed on here, that are, that are gone, that we need to fill in for places. So, anybody have any particular, we'll just go, let's just go straight now. Audit committee, anybody jumping to fill Miss Foreman's spot in the audit committee?
I'll certainly take it unless somebody else would like to. I'm, I'm happy to take it.
I'm not, I mean, if you want.
I actually have you down for it.
Okay, that's, okay, we can, we can keep moving then, I'll take that one.
Yeah, okay.
The Central Florida Public School Board Coalition was, Mr. Tatum, would you still like that?
Yeah, it's fine.
Anybody want to push them off, like you'd say, no, I really, really want that? Not much traveling anymore now, it's all pretty much Zoom.
It's all, it's all on Zoom, yeah.
Yeah.
So the Children's Services Advisory Board, that was Ms. Messenger, that is now me, and I was hoping it was gonna be someone else when we got this board together. So, I think Charlie, you, you were part of that, but you definitely don't have to do that.
I would be interested in that one.
Okay.
Give me a second for you. I have question marks on it, good deal.
I don't have any issue with that, if that's what you want, it's yours. We will submit that, there is a, there is a online application. I will say, so this was discussed, and I don't, we don't have to keep it this way, we can have you, if you want to be involved in it. We discussed as, when Ms. Messenger did resign from her seat, as a board, we did discuss, is it prudent for a board member to be on there, an actual person from the staff to be on there, since they are daily working with, with students more so than we as a board are. But if that's something you want, I don't particularly care. If you want to do it, you're like, hey, I'm passionate about, let's do it, that's, that's perfectly fine. But if you get in there and you feel like it's something that you, that is maybe too much or whatever, we would, I think, Mr. Die, we discussed, we're gonna have to like, change the charter and do some things that, to get a non-board member on there. So, but if you're wanting to do it.
Yeah, I would like to.
Okay. We'll submit that and, and Ms. Cox will get that going.
Yeah, yeah. I think she has to fly online.
All right, C-Foc. Ms. Spray, you were on C-Foc, anybody jumping and want to do that? Do you want to do it again, Ms.?
I'll still stay on the C-Foc.
Okay.
Continuity.
Audit Selection Committee, Mr. Kennedy, it's just...
That would be.
Yeah, I'll take that.
As well.
We obviously just did one, so I don't particularly see that needed, maybe in the future, but. The FSB Advocacy Committee, I'm, I'm on it, alternate Cindy Spray, if anybody wants to jump in on it, I'm not opposed, but I'll still do it, it's good.
I'm still.
Okay. Anybody want it? No?
Okay.
All right, we'll keep that the same. Board Directors, FSB Board Directors, that's obviously an extra thing if you ever want to do that. The FSBA, the Florida Education Investment Trust, the Florida Palms, I'm a board member on there already, and you gotta kind of apply and do all that kind of stuff. I'm one of school board members, one of two, so that I'll keep. FSBA Finance Committee, Ms. Foreman was our representative on that.
Wait, where are we at?
So that's you monitoring the, the financial operation and budgetary process for the FSBA, like just the FSBA.
Oh, I can, I can take that.
Okay.
Again, if nobody else wants it.
Troy Kennedy, all right.
I do not.
I'll take, I'll take the next one, too.
Okay. Greater Florida Consortium?
Yep.
That's the one, that's the actually kind of one.
Oh, do you? Okay, no, no problem.
I was interested in that one as well.
Okay, great. No, you guys, you guys can talk it out, yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, Ms. Foreman was, was it before? It's our board of consortiums from Pinellas across, down around the state, almost every single one of them, although like Broward, so.
That's the one that makes the U?
Yeah.
I call that the Finger Consortium. It's all of the counties that are coastal.
It's all the coastal water.
I just call it Finger Counties, but, yeah.
So.
Really interested in. Is that all right with you?
Yeah.
Okay. She's fine with my taking that.
So what'd you decide? Okay.
Yep.
Liquor Bridge Business Alliance was Mr. Tatum?
I'll keep that, since that's my district out there, yeah.
Yeah.
Latin Chamber of Commerce, Commerce was Mr. Tatum? Did they ever meet or do anything?
I've been trying to track them down, but I don't know that they actually exist.
I don't know if they actually...
I was gonna talk about that one. I mean, if you, if there's no participation or any involvement in that, I, I don't know if we necessarily need to have it.
Well, I don't disagree with that at all.
Well, how about I really try to go track these people down, because I have a couple...
I don't even know what they do, to be honest.
It's, it's, it's a Chamber of Commerce for Latin business owners. So, business owners that, that are Latin descent are, are part of it, and so they network each with each other, et cetera. Yeah, I mean...
I can go track them down with them, try to see if they actually exist, because I have before, I've Googled them, I made some inquiries, I can't, but maybe they're out there and I just haven't, give me 30 days to see if there's actually something there, and if not, we can remove it.
Right, good.
Perfect. Legislative liaison collaborates with the legislative delegation for the FSBA. It was me and Spray, Ms. Spray as the alternate. So, really haven't done too much with that, to be honest with you, I mean. But, anybody want it? Nying for it?
I'm fine, stamina, I'm out as an alternate.
The Manti Chamber of Commerce Board is the, is the chair, so that's me. MTC Board Governors was Mr. Tatum.
I'll keep it. I mean, I'll have to speed on what's going on there, if that's okay with everybody.
Yep, that's, I'm fine.
Going back real quick, before we move on, the Lakewood Ranch Business Alliance, I noticed that for the Chamber of Commerce, there's a $350 annual due there. I think there's a, there are dues to be part of the...
There is, yeah. I'm not sure, Mr., I know Mr. Chapman's not here.
I just want to make sure that we're, we're okay with expending whatever, whatever money it takes to become a member.
It's probably gonna be very similar to what that 350 is.
Okay.
It's probably right on it. And, and, and board, we have a group, like it's not, I know Mr. Tatum's the representative, but we can all go to any Lakewood Ranch Business Alliance meetings, events, et cetera. Like, like it's not just, Mr. Tatum is our, is our, is our only representative that can go, we can all go. Same thing with anything with the chamber. But he is just on as, as that person to, to represent us.
Right.
So yeah, if you just want to, Ms. Cox, can you just find that amount out and put it in there for when we vote next? Okay. And maybe, maybe give it just for free, I don't know. Okay. MTC Board Members, where am I at here? School Health Advisory?
I would be very interested in doing that one.
Okay.
That's fine. Are we, so you're still the chamber, correct, Chair?
Yes. So Gina was that one, so that is...
No, Heather, you got it.
The Value Adjustment Board?
I am on that one. I took that one over from Ms. Foreman, I'm happy to stay on that.
That's right. And then, Mr. Tatum, you were backup?
I'll be a backup, in case.
Okay.
Okay. Manti Education is the school board chair. Manti County Fair was Ms. Messenger?
Oh, please.
Yeah?
I love the fair, I love the fair.
Perfect.
It's gotta be District 1.
I think it has, yeah, I think it has to be. I think it's been Ms. Messenger the whole time there.
Yeah. Oh, wait.
Great.
I'll take that last one.
Fair's coming up, which is craziness. And the last one, you want the liaison for IT?
If nobody else wants it, I, yeah, I've worked with Silent, Silent before, so.
Don't particularly have a preference?
Anybody else? Okay, I'll take it.
So CK's got that.
And the MPL Board, Ms. Spray, you were on it?
I want to, yeah.
You want to stay or no?
I, I'll stay on it, I just don't think it's another committee that we need to actually be there.
Okay.
I've attended most of the meetings, and the school participation is real minimal. I mean, it's basically, you go and you get a report on how many rides there were, where they went, medical, food, jobs, whatever. So I don't know if it's necessary that we need to have a school board member on there. I could better serve my time on other things, to be honest.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I think, I think that was one that was several years ago was added, they asked us to have someone on there, it was never on there before. Do you remember?
Ms. Spray, I, this is definitely new.
Yeah.
I think, which is why it's last on the list.
Yeah, they asked us about it.
Yeah. I had, they had reached out to me, and I said, well, we'll put it on the calendar and see what interest, and there was a little interest, but not a lot. But after attending it and seeing, I think that is probably not a good fit.
Ms. Spray, if you don't want it, I'll take it over and go check it out.
Sure.
Okay.
I'll let you do that.
Yeah, 'cause that's, that's, that's a new one for me.
Yeah.
All right.
Okay.
That is all of those. Perfect. Talk about the workshops. Dr. Wyson, in briefings and things, was that discussed on how we bring up workshop items and board items and things like that? Go ahead.
So we have, Chairman, we have the existing spreadsheet, that there are four or five topics, I think, that were suggested, once the new board was seated. And so if you want to continue that practice of just each board member bringing workshops to me during the one-on-one briefings, then we'll maintain those lists, and then I'll work with the chair on the agenda pursuant to our policy.
Okay. And obviously, board members bringing up topics at your briefings for meetings as well. All right, so it's, looks like that's pretty much it from this FSBA protocol thing. I think everything else has pretty much been covered and handled, and thank you for onboarding, you and your staff. I overheard them talking how great the onboard was, I really, really appreciate that.
It was, it was excellent. I felt very prepared.
Great. All right, I'm gonna go ahead and recess this reorg meeting, and call to order the annual meeting of the Manti School Board Leasing Corporation. And with that, I need to read this statement, and we need to vote and approve this statement, or I'll need a motion. Under the Articles of Incorporation for the Manti School Board Leasing Corporation, the members of the not-for-profit corporation are the members of the school board. The Articles of Incorporation provide that the school, the board of directors, unless changed by the membership, are the members of the school board. The officers are the president, which is president, vice president, secretary treasurer. The articles also provide that the chair of the school board is the president, the vice chair is the vice president, and the secretary treasurer is the secretary of the school board, which is the superintendent.
So moved.
So there's our motion.
One second.
And our second. So, all those in favor of the Articles of Incorporation for the Manti School Board Leasing Corporation, just raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes 5 to 0. All right, I'm gonna go ahead and adjourn this annual meeting of the Manti School Board Leasing Corporation, and I'm going to reconvene the reorg meeting of the school board of Manti County. And with that, I don't have any other further comments or anything, board members?
I just have a couple. I know we're not really on the agenda, but before we adjourn, well, we'll reconvene, so another reconvene if I may. No, it's just, it's a, I said to the chair, when I sat down before the meeting opened, it's a little surreal to be back, but it's, it's a pleasure to, to serve the county, and I'm looking forward to building this board team, this brand-new board team. I also want to thank the voters of Manatee County for their overwhelming support of the One Mill to, to support our schools. I had no doubt it was gonna be yes, but to see the results that we got, just shows all of our staff, all of our employees, just how much this community stands behind this district. And, and we've shown results since 2018, 2018-19 school year, when it was first implemented, and the, the community sees that, and they've got our backs. And I could not be more appreciative to them, because we, we will become an A-school district. We are, we are just as competitive with any district around us or in the state, and that's due to the, to our voters and our, our community support. And I don't know, Chairman Choate, if we have any FSBA training coming up?
We, we have the, the FSBA and FAD's combination December, but as far as...
But any that, like we're doing, yeah, like master board training?
We discussed maybe doing like a one-day master board, not the whole master board thing yet. We haven't put that on the calendar yet, but we thought maybe bringing in FSBA, doing something like a one-day mini version of a master board training.
Okay, excellent.
Yeah.
Excellent. And then finally, this is kind of a personal note, you know, the elections are behind us, and Mr. Tatum, you and I have certainly had our differences during the election, and I hope you will give me a second chance to kind of try again, restart as board members. And so I would, I would very much appreciate that.
Sure. And, I, I mean, this is politics, like, we've selected our chairman, I have friends up here on the, on the dice, so I don't have any, you were duly elected and I supported somebody else for your seat, but you're duly elected, and now we'll work together for the benefit of the Manatee County school system. I mean, I don't, I don't, I don't know what giving you a second chance means in the sense of, I've never quote-unquote, I never gave you a chance, it's just, politically I supported somebody else, but elections happen, and then you, you work with the people that are elected, and that's what's good for the...
Oh, yeah, no, I, let me, let me be more clear, maybe I chose the wrong choice of words. It wasn't even about the election, it was just, you and I disagreed on some things.
Yeah.
And I, I wanna, I wanna start again if you, if you'd...
Yeah.
Give me that chance.
No, I'm sure, thanks, Mr. Kennedy, I have, I have no issues with you. You've heard me say it before, it's better to be helpful than to try and be right. And so I want to be, what'd be helpful is that we all work together and live together well. I, can I ask you a favor, though?
Of course.
It's been, some constituents have brought to my attention that they're concerned that you're not currently residing in the district. So would it be possible to provide some, some proof to the public that you are residing in the district? Just if somebody came to me and said, hey, Mr. Tatum, we don't think you're residing in the district, I would provide a utility bill, a lease, a mortgage or something.
I've got a lease I can provide through Mr. Die.
And just so that, so that... Okay. And just so that those constituents understand that you're, we're all following the law, and you're following the law, and you're currently living in your district.
Of course. No, I knew that would be an issue, so I had to, I made sure it was taken care of.
Okay, great, then. That's all, that's all I have to say, and thank you.
Yeah, Ms. Wyson, go ahead.
I just wanted to, first of all, thank folks who are here for me today. I appreciate your show of support, and my husband and my son who came as well. But I also want to thank all of the staff who has worked so hard to help us with the onboarding. Obviously, I'm the only one who hasn't sat up here before. So, to be able to meet with all the department heads, to meet your staff, to get tours all over the district, it's been, as several people have said to me, like drinking water through a fire hose, I'm now down to a garden hose. I've got much better at this. I have a really good understanding, and I feel very prepared to be here. So, I just want to thank the staff, particularly Ms. Cox, who has made sure that everything I need to do is being done and keeping me on track. So, thank you all very much.
Any other?
On FSBA, I think that Ms. Cox gave you a schedule of some of the upcoming events that, yeah, so-
Yeah, there's some other events, yeah, for sure.
Yeah.
But we can discuss further, like, a board training.
Yeah, I meant, I, Ms. Spray, I was referring to something just for the five of us.
Oh, I see, I see.
As a new board, you can be forming-
We discussed that before, and we said, we'll wait to figure out who, who's all in, and everything like that. And so, I definitely had something that I know we have discussed, and I think it'd be good for us. And maybe it's not a full-fledged master board training right out of the gate, but something.
Oh, sure.
Dr. Wyson?
Thank you, Chairman. We, yes, in our, in, in planning for all of this, one of the unknowns was how long we would have four board members versus five. And so, with that resolved, I think that gives more clarity around reaching out to FSBA and getting, getting those folks in to facilitate that conversation among you in a workshop, because, as you discussed, your expectations, those are important signals for my team and I about how we can best support your work. So, I'll, I'll work with the Chair on scheduling all of that. It's likely that we will need one workshop in December. I'm aware of at least one topic for discussion that, that has a time element to it. So, as soon as we're done here today, Ms. Cox and the Chair and I will start working on what that schedule looks like. And again, we'll, we'll reach out to FSBA to see what our options are for, for that facilitated discussion.
All right.
Thank you. All right, I know, we're not going, we are going somewhere. I think we're in 203 for our executive session.
Right.
So, thank you to all the staff, thank you, everybody. Welcome, the new board members, welcome back. And look forward to, to continuing what the board, what the district's doing and-
Yeah.
Get to the A, like Mr. Kennedy said, so-
Start going.
See y'all in 15 minutes upstairs. Return.